I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for April 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody, and happy International Creativity and Innovation Day. Pretty cool. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants, the panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platform such as the elected officials, the city administrator, city attorney, and any staff or person making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will still be able to speak for three minutes during business from the audience or during agenda items if they submitted their request to speak before noon today. Additionally, if members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next city council meeting. Today's consent agenda includes approval of the March 9th, 2021 regular council meeting minutes as well as the March 23rd, 2021 special city council meeting minutes, approval of the February bank balances, budget report for periods ending February 28th, 2021, approval of the February check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for March 2021, consider authorization to purchase a new police vehicle per the replacement policy. Our regular meeting agenda includes an intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an IGA, with Clackamas Fire for Fire Marshal Services, collective bargaining agreement with the city of Gladstone and the professional firefighters of Clackamas County, updated intergovernmental agreement, again, an IGA, for public safety communication services with Lake Oswego for warrant confirmation services, renovation of the Max Patterson Park pickleball court, and appointment to the audit and budget committees. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Hartman?
Present.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. All right, let's do the flag salute. We've got the flag up there on the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no changes.
All right, and we have no correspondence. So first item is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? All right, would someone like to make a motion then, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Tracy to accept the consent agenda. Do we have any additional discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Alexander? Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, consent agenda has been approved. A couple of things before we start with the regular agenda. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That does not mean that our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to participate in this process. We will have you muted until it is your time to speak. If we are not able to mute you, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope all of you can help me do that. So the first item is number eight, which is the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Clackamas Fire for Fire Marshal Officer Services to include engineering enforcement and fire investigations. Staff?
Chief Mayor, good evening, city council. Tonight, we have a great collaboration that we're going to present to you. We have some guests, but first I'm going to hand it over to Fire Chief Huffman to introduce the agenda item and his guest tonight.
Thank you Administrator Beth. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, my apologies, I got caught on the road, and so I had to pull over for this. Mayor, city councilors, and Administrator Beths, the staff report is for your consideration of entering into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA between the city of Gladstone and Clackamas County Fire District One Fire Marshal Services. Also on the call tonight, we have Division Chief Brian Stewart and Fire Marshal Sean Olson from Clackamas County Fire. And I have to say, before we get started, the interim process and temporary services that they provided have been exceptional, and both these chiefs have been really cooperative in getting this agreement penciled out. A quick history is, the reason we're tonight before you is because on January 29th earlier this year, our Fire Marshal Mike Funk retired from the Fire Department after over 40 years of service. His retirement left the city without dedicated Fire Marshal Services, and these services include public education, fire life safety review of permits, inspections of businesses, and fire investigation. This vacancy does provide us an opportunity for a cost benefit analysis of the full-time Fire Marshal's employ versus the overall Fire Department organizational needs and costs. Fire Marshal Services are needed since the retirement of Mike and have been provided temporarily, as I said, by the Clackamas County Fire District Fire Marshal's Office. That said, connecting with the community is vital, and I believe public education for fire safety and emergency preparedness will remain with the Fire Department here in Gladstone. Local review of business permits will also continue by me, but the ability to review building permits and other planning processes and specific building inspections require a qualified and certified fire inspector. These services would part of the recommended IGA. That said, the number of fires that require this level of service within Gladstone are minimal compared to Gladstone or Clackamas, and the IGA will allow for these services to continue, but on a cost by cost base basis with qualified inspectors and investigators. The proposal to you tonight is for the Gladstone Fire Department to enter into a IGA effective, I believe it's the 22nd is the effective date, through July 1st of 2022. Costs are approximately $56,795 for Fire Marshal Services, and the fire investigated services will be billed for actual costs by an hourly rate as demonstrated in Appendix A in the IGA. The costs associated with this IGA significantly less than the previous Gladstone Fire Marshal FTE and associated payroll costs, and as I stated, this will allow us time to evaluate this position and the service level within the city. The recommended staff action is to approve this IGA, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have one. You mentioned that it starts April 22nd. It shows April 26th in our paperwork, so which is the correct one?
Mayor, I believe we can finalize that, maybe Chief Stewart or the Fire Marshal can answer that, but we can amend that to the effective date if it passes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have anything else from staff? No, do we have any questions from council? Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions. All I'll say is, if everything goes right, it'll be good to see Sean back in town every once in a while.
It's definitely good to see you. It's been a long time. I'm definitely looking forward to this.
Counselor Garlington?
I think I missed where both Mr. Stewart and Mr. Olson were employed at or where they're coming, what departments they're coming from.
We can let them introduce themselves, but they are from the Clackamas County Fire District One.
Okay, thank you.
So why don't we go, yeah, do introductions then. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Brian Stewart. I am the Division Chief of, over Community Services or Community Services of Clackamas Fire. So I have a number of program areas from data services and information technology, but I also have the Fire Marshal's Office as one of my program areas and served previously as the Assistant Fire Marshal. I've been fortunate to work with that component of our organization for about the last three years. And to the prior point, before I move over to Chief Olson, the intended start date for the contract is April 20th, which is one day after our board meets. So our board meets next Monday, and that would permit us to start this as promptly as possible so we can continue providing that service to the city of Gladstone. And with that, I'll go ahead and let Sean introduce himself.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sean Olson, Fire Marshal with Clackamas Fire. I oversee all aspects of the Fire Marshal's Office. Really, that pertains to what is presented in front of you with the IGA, the engineering enforcement and fire investigation. So we're really looking forward to this and hope that it's approved.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we'll continue on with council. Counselor Hartman, do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you, no questions.
All right, Counselor Todd?
No, I don't have any questions, thanks.
Counselor Alexander?
No, thanks. I think it's a great deal.
All right, Counselor Tracy?
No questions, thanks, Mayor.
All right, well, then would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire.
Right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Are we going to add the date change in there?
Yeah, we'll amend it to April 20th.
Okay.
All right, motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Ripley to approve the IGA. Do we have any additional discussion, questions, or concerns?
Mayor, just for clarity purposes, I think you should add that it's an IGA for Fire Marshal Services, so it's not implied that it's with Clackamas Fire for other services in the motion.
Okay, so motion was made by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Ripley to approve the IGA for Fire Marshal Services with Clackamas County Fire District Number One.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, IGA has been approved. Thank you, guys. It'll be nice seeing you around, Sean. All right, next item is number nine, collective bargaining agreement with city of Gladstone and the professional firefighters of Clackamas County, IAFF. For this item, my husband works in the Fire Department, and he is part of this agreement, so I do have a conflict of interest. So I'm going to turn this one item over to our council president, Counselor Matt Tracy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Staff, do you want to present on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. For this item, our city negotiations team consisted of the city attorney, which was Ashley Driscoll, our human resources consultant Nancy McDonald, and Fire Rick Huffman. I believe that tonight Chad is going to be covering for Ashley on this, and so I will defer to Chad and Nancy to give a brief overview of the negotiations.
So I believe Nancy, who I think is on the phone, was going to start off, and then I'll be available to answer questions. But if not, I'm happy to do so.
Good evening, councilors.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Nancy, we can.
All right, thank you. The agenda item before you tonight is for amendments to the current collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF Local 1159. And if you'll recall, we met in an executive session last month and went over the outstanding issues. There were only three that we were hoping to address in the reopener, was wages, overtime, and insurance. As it turned out, there were no changes to the insurance. The overtime article, we did address previously in November with an MOU to clarify the past practice as well as the continuing practice of how we paid the four captains their overtime hours. So really, the significant item that we had to address was the second and third year cost of living adjustments. The reason that the entire contract is attached with the changes redlined is because in the course of negotiations and setting up the meetings was affected by the pandemic, and also there was a significant change on the members of council, and I wanted them to see the document to which we were referring. The significant item is that the cost of living for July 1st of 2021 is set at 3%, which is equivalent to what the other two associations and the nonrepresented employees will be receiving as their cost of living adjustment. The second year of this contract, we were successful in negotiating a lower cost of living, and we came in at 1.5%, which will set the ground rules, or I would say, the groundwork for the upcoming negotiations that will be due with the Police Association and the Public Works Association. And with that, I will just field questions.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Chad, were you doing any follow-up on that presentation, or were you just waiting for questions?
Just waiting for questions. I think Nancy summarized everything to the extent we needed to.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go ahead and call on council as they're on my screen. Counselor Ripley, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Garlington?
I have no questions.
Counselor Hartman?
I have no questions, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I have no questions, thank you.
All right, Counselor Alexanders?
I do not have any, thank you.
Okay, I just want to say thank you, Nancy, for the way that you lined that out. I think it was pretty easy to follow the step increases and the difference in the 2021 and 2022 colas. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Staff, is there any more presentation on this other than what we've heard?
I would just like to recommend that the council approve the proposed reopener amendments to the agreement and authorize the city administrator to go forth and sign the document.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. City Administrator Beth, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
Nope, I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, Tammy, would you call a roll call vote? I think we're there. Oh, actually, no, let's back up. Would somebody like to go ahead and bring this forward in a motion?
I'll motion.
All right, Greg Alexander, Counselor Alexander. Go ahead.
I make a motion that we enter into the bargaining agreement with the city of Gladstone and professional firefighters at Clackamas County IAFF.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved that we enter into this agreement as a reopener with our folks at IAFF 1159, and seconded. I'm sorry, who gave the second?
Hartman.
Okay. Motion brought forward by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Hartman. Tammy, would you call a roll, please?
Counselor Hartman? Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, so the motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe the mayor will now take the gavel.
There I am. All right, so the next item is number 10, which is an updated intergovernmental cooperative agreement for public safety communication services with Lake Oswego, and this agreement will provide warrant confirmation services. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. For this item, I'm going to hand it over to our Police Chief John Schmuber.
How's that? Thank you, sorry, having trouble with my computer. Thank you Administrator Beth, and then welcome council and mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come for you for this IGA. In March, in March of 2020, I came before you and asked to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Locom, which is Lake Oswego's communication center. And as you read in the staff report, you can tell that the sheriff's office, who used to confirm warrants for us at all hours of the day and handle that type of communication activity, no longer did so at that point, which is why we entered in that agreement with Lake Oswego. So the first year was a, was kind of a pilot project to see how Locom was able to handle all the agencies, because it's just not Gladstone, it was all the municipalities in Clackamas County that was forced to go there. And they've agreed to continue on moving forward with that. We're grateful for that because it's absolutely needed. And we would like to enter into another agreement. The partnership is strong. Only this time, it's a two-year IGA for '21-'22. And the expense on this is fairly low. I think the first year was $1,500 for the year. This time, it's $1,700 for the first year of 2021 and $1,900 for 2022. These funds are budgeted, and I'm asking for your approval to enter into this IGA. At this point, we don't have any other options. It's one of the requirements of what we do to especially after hours and on the weekends. And the purpose of that is we just don't have 24/7 record units.
All right, do we have anything else from staff on this one? No? All right, well, then I'm going to go to council, and I'm going to mix it up a bit. Counselor Alexander, any questions or concerns?
Nope, seems I've had some discussion with the chief, and we have to have this, and we're getting a good deal, so I like it.
All right, Counselor Todd?
No, I agree with Counselor Alexander. It's, I'm fine with it.
Counselor Hartman?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
No, I'm good with it.
All right, Counselor Garlington?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for the chief. Chief, it seemed, Oregon City, in my understanding, that Oregon City does not have this capability as well?
Yeah, so Oregon City is also going through Locom, so it's pretty much all the municipalities. Milwaukee and West Lynn are already dispatched through Locom, so that's already been handled by them. It's basically the agencies that were, are affiliated with CCOM.
The costing I see in Exhibit B then is basically volume costing, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I just am surprised that Oregon City doesn't have that capability, especially how big they're growing and how fast.
Right.
Okay, thank you, chief, appreciate it. No further questions, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, then would somebody like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we enter into the cooperative agreement for public safety communication services with Lake Oswego.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy, or excuse me, motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Tracy to renew the IGA between the city of Gladstone and the city of Lake Oswego for police department warrant service confirmation. Any further discussion, questions, or concerns? I don't see any hands, so Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley? Sorry, I didn't hear, was that yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, IGA has been approved. Item 11 is the renovation of the Max Patterson Park Pickleball Court, which is an update on the renovation, asking for approval to move forward with the written agreement with the Gladstone Pickleball Club to complete the project. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. Tonight, I want to give you an update on the renovation of the pickleball court, but I also need some guidance on a couple of areas. In March of this year, the city council adopted the Max Patterson Park Pickleball Courts renovation project to their goals for '21 and '22. Since that time, I've had some conversations with members of the club to try to strategize a cost-effective and efficient process for completing the project. Just to give you a little bit of background, pickleball has become a very popular sport, not only in Gladstone but across the state and the nation. And in March of 2018, the city of Gladstone did enter into an agreement with the Gladstone Pickleball Club to allow them a limited use of the Max Patterson tennis courts for pickleball. Items that are in that agreement are use, operation, the secure storage locker, the term of the agreement, and repair and restoration. So since that time, they gave a presentation to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board in December of 2020, wanting to do a complete renovation of the court. There is an area of the court that tends to dip and slope a little bit. So they went out and got bids from a contractor on what that would cost. They also asked some questions about if they were to go out and do fundraising and get donations if the city could help them out using their nonprofit status. So I wanted to provide you some updates. If the city was to move this project forward, meaning from Public Works, we would not be able to start this until approximately January of 2022 simply because of the other projects that we're working on, and we haven't currently budgeted for the renovation project. So to answer the question specifically, if they want to do fundraising to complete the project, is there the capability for them to donate funds that are tax deductible? And yes, because the city is a nonprofit municipality corporation, if donations were made to the city of Gladstone for the renovation project, we could reserve those into a fund until the Gladstone Pickleball Club needs the funds and the city is able to issue a letter to the donors for tax deduction purposes. Additionally, they applied for a grant through Travel Oregon for, it's called a community enhancement grant. They are a nonprofit, but they're not registered with the Oregon Secretary of State. They are a nonprofit, but they're not registered with the Oregon Secretary of State's office. Therefore, the city has agreed that if they are awarded the funds, we would be the fiscal agent, and it would go specifically towards the renovation project. The other question was whether or not the Gladstone Pickleball Club can take this project on doing it themselves without any city representation to do so. The answer to that is yes. However, there would need to be a written agreement between the city and the Gladstone Pickleball Club to assure that all the requirements are being met. They also had concerns about whether or not the city could provide a ten-year agreement between the city and the Pickleball Club that the court property would not be sold. And in conferring with the city attorney on this, it's a yes and no. It would be difficult for the current elected officials to bound the city to future policy decisions. But I also want to remind everyone that the likelihood that the city would sell this property is minimal. We have measures three, five oh five, and three, five oh six in the Gladstone Charter that would require a voter approval before we could even remove the park designation for any city-owned real property. And a voter approval would be required before selling or leasing park property. So the city attorney and I are confident that we could provide the necessary assurances for the Pickleball Club and their donors that the city has no intentions of selling the property, but we couldn't necessarily put a ten-year agreement together. So there are some things that I would like you to consider. The Pickleball Group wants to raise money to renovate the courts. Uh, the fencing around the courts is old and antiquated, and it also needs to be removed, but that's not really in their desire to fix that. The city went out and got bids from the same contractor that the Pickleball Club did. Theirs came in around fifty to sixty thousand dollars versus the city's was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus. A lot of that is in addition to the fencing, and a lot of that is due to the city being a public agency and having to pay prevailing wages. So if the city wanted to allow the Pickleball Club to take this project on their own and complete it, city staff would have to completely disengage from the project because then we could have a claim filed on us for not following the correct city procurement processes. There is a little bit of risk to that, and as if the contractor doesn't complete the work, I'm not sure what assurances the Pickleball Club could have in place to make sure that would get done correctly. The city then would have to step in and find the money to complete the project. But if that is something that the city wants to pursue, then we would have Chad and David draw up an agreement between the city and the Pickleball Club to do that project. The other option for you to consider is that they only want to replace one tennis court, and currently there is two. And I believe in assuring that we're being equitable to all of the people in the community that want access to the tennis court and the pickleball court, that we should have the two tennis courts. And in the quote that the Pickleball did, they want to have eight pickleball courts and one tennis court. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that in researching our options, we've discovered that the city has encroached on the school district's property. It was back in the nineties where we planted trees and added a pathway by the the Pickleball Courts. We don't believe the school district is aware of it. Our recommendation would be that the city ask for an easement and agree to maintain the area instead of going through the process of a property line adjustment. This would not impede the ability to move the renovation project forward. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And I also think that we just need to be cognizant in general and be mindful with whatever you decide to move forward with that this still is a city publicly owned park and that the Pickleball Club doesn't get a carte blanche access to it. In fact, their agreement has specific uh, days and times that they can use it, and the city really hasn't been enforcing it this past year because of COVID. And quite frankly, we encourage outdoor activities when anybody could get out there doing social distancing. But I think that we just need to be cognizant that there are people that play tennis and probably would like to have access to the court as well. But we're also, again, trying to find a way to move this project forward. Um, and if the Pickleball Club is willing to raise the funds and do this project on their own, completely disengaged from the city, I'm willing to try to put an agreement together to do that. But I just want to make sure that you understand that Public Works and I believe that replacing the fencing uh, should be part of this project. It needs to be done now because otherwise, if you wait to do it the second time, most of the time it doesn't get done, or it's just going to make the project not look uh, new with the full renovation. So with that, I'm going to open it up for questions. Chad is also here to address any of the other items that we talked about in regards to the city selling the property. So that's all I have in my presentation.
All right, there's a lot there. I'm going to start with Counselor Alexander. Questions or concerns?
There's a lot of moving parts there. I guess the fencing, if you're concerned about the fencing, I don't know if they've looked into. You can have you can have the fence, the current fence that's there. And we've done this before, and you can go down and have them powder coated, you know, a certain color. And they look brand new, and they make it much more durable at a much cheaper cost, if that would be something. And besides that, I just know how popular it is. You can't go by there without seeing it attacked every day. So it's a good, uh, it's a good attraction to our city and for our businesses. So, you know, I mean, it's up to every, I just guess that's all I'm concerned with. I I think it's a good idea, and we need it, and I think you can look into some options for the fencing. Um, besides everything else, I don't know. That would have to there'd have to be an agreement put on the table before you could actually say yes or no, I think. And that's all I have.
All right, Counselor Garlington.
I have two questions. Is the is any part of the court itself on the school district property?
No.
Just the walkway and the trees?
Yeah, it actually butts right up to the fence line.
Okay.
But not unto the court.
Okay. And then, uh, could we possibly ask for monthly updates until all fundraising and renovations have been made to either the Parks Board or to us in some way? From the from the club? Would that be possible in this agreement?
So if if we did move forward, allowing them to project management, you would want uh, updates? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we can make that provision. Absolutely.
That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
My only thoughts, if they want to take on a project and raise the money, I think that's great. And I do agree with that. It needs to be replaced. But also that any other repairs to the surface, making sure those are properly repaired before the service goes on. Otherwise, we're going to end up having to redo it later. So as long as they make sure everything's done right, I think if they want to handle that, they should go for it.
All right, Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. So my two questions. One is, I I'm not hearing that the city the city doesn't have control at certain points. And so what I want to understand is what's the liability for the city? Um, and the second question is, would, uh, I guess to Administrator Bets, would we require them to uh, basically actualize the full funding prior to moving forward? So that we're not piecemealing a project together um, with, and I don't know who the project managers are, but I'm going to guess that if it's a citizen group that there may be some limited construction, project management experience in that group. There may be people with wonderful amounts of management. But I have a couple of questions. One is, what's our liability risk here? And two, um, do we okay, as a city, do we okay the project management plan and the construction plan going forward and making sure that they're fully funded so that it's not um, just part of the project being replaced or part of the courts being replaced? And then we run out of funding.
Correct. So I will answer the second part and say, yes, we would require that the donations and fundraising be complete before we do the project. We would also need to approve the scope of work. The Public Works Director and I would do that. The liability piece, I will let Chad talk to you about what the exposure is for the city.
Sure. Thanks, Jackie. Uh, for the record, Mayor and Council Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. The um, the liability here is just like any other sort of construction situation that we've got with the city. And the way we handle that is that we generally have requirements in our agreements that the contractors have to not only defend and identify the city, but they also name the city as an additional insured. And so the way we would handle that here is in the agreement with the nonprofit corporation, we would have a requirement that they do the same with their contractors. So their contractors would have a not, when they enter into a contract for construction, they would have an obligation for that contractor to name the city as an additional insured and identify and defend the city as well. So that would basically take care of it the same way we do for any other construction contract.
So, Mayor, I have a follow-up question for Chad. So Chad, would would it not be good for this group to actually become structured as an entity? I I mean, for this nonprofit group? Wouldn't we rather see an LLC? Wouldn't we rather see some structure, an organizational structure in a group that's going to take on a project like this?
Yeah, so it's my understanding, and Jackie, correct me if I have this wrong, is that they are a nonprofit. They're just not a registered or incorporated nonprofit. So they they do have bylaws. They do. They are an organization. There is some structure to it. Um, you know, we would obviously make sure that they have insurance for themselves as well. Um, but, you know, we're not requiring that they become incorporated and take those formal steps to to reach that status where they could then receive tax deductible contributions on their own. If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Todd.
Yeah, a couple of questions come to mind. Um, the the Pickleball Club at this point is allowed to use the courts when? Because I see them there all the time. So, I mean, is there?
Correct. So, uh, again, in the contract, it says it is Monday through Saturday from nine AM to twelve PM, except during the community festival because they have tournaments there. And then they may also request additional hours. But like I mentioned, we have not been enforcing that due to COVID. So I do think that we would need to talk about shared use of the courts if we do move forward with this to assure that other players can also participate with tennis or pickleball that's not with the group.
Right. Um, another question that I had, you know, I think it was only last month that we had soccer, baseball, softball, all of those groups, and talking about what it costs to rent the spaces to play. Once we get past this, I mean, or even up until now, have there, do we have set in place fees for the renting of pickleball during that timeframe? Because it's kind of hard to go to the soccer who, you know, chocks their field or whatever and has their own equipment there and and then say, well, this group doesn't have to. I think we're going to get ourselves into a pickle ball with that. So I was wondering, do we have anything in place with that in the master?
In our current agreement, it specifically says that we are not charging for use of the premise.
For ten years or for forever now?
It's a reoccurring agreement. If that is something that the City Council would like us to explore as we move forward with the soccer, the baseball, the softball user fees, like the timeline I gave you, it's something that we're looking at implementing in January twenty twenty two. If you want that to include tennis and pickleball, that's direction that you can give us as well.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, mostly just some uh, comments and concerns similar to Counselor Todd that um, the concern with entitlement of the of the space. Um, they are there, you know, all the time, not just Monday through Saturday, nine to twelve. And so, which is fine, like if we have a set schedule, that's great. We should um, hold them to that so that others in the community know that the pickleball courts are being used from nine to twelve. I can go play tennis in the afternoon. Um, you know, but the tennis lines, you know, are painted over. Um, and so as we move forward, you know, are we moving forward saying that these are just going to be pickleball courts? Um, or are we going to have them be multi-use? Uh, because the examples that they gave on their presentation are cities that have specific pickleball courts, and the nets are always up. And other people can go if you have your own equipment. You don't have to be a part of the club. There's still reserved times, but then outside of the reserve time, it is first come, first served basis, but it is solely all pickleball. And so my concern is they do all this wonderful work. Like, I think it's great, the volunteerism and what they're wanting to do. Um, and my concern is that they'll feel like this is our pickleball court and not the community's multi-use courts. And I don't want to set us up or future administrations up once we do get to a point essentially of having like Parks and Rec where there are actually reserving spaces. Um, because there's already verbiage within the presentations of like, this is ours, you know, and I just want to be mindful that it is a tennis court as well. Um, so I I I'm just nervous to like enter into an agreement uh, where we don't have any control over a public piece of property. Um, and then can you clarify why the, again, the sixty thousand is so different administrative rest? Is it because it's only covering one of the side?
It's the fence is not included in the Pickleball Club's proposal. That's one piece of it. And then we also believe that because the city got a bid, it includes a prevailing wage, which an a government entity has to include in their contract.
Sure.
Um, and I I do appreciate your comments because one of the guidance I need is if you want this to move forward, do you want just one tennis court? Do you want two tennis courts like there should be? Um, the Pickleball Club has their own net, so you are correct that when they're not playing, they take them off and store them. But do we want a permanent net there for somebody else to play pickleball if they're not part of that club? That is the kind of direction that I need from the council. Um, so that would be helpful if you guys could come to a consensus on those items.
All right, I have a couple of questions. First is the prevailing wage requirements. I just don't see how we can get around it. So I'm sure that you've looked into it pretty closely, but this seems to be something that's come up many times in the past, and we always aired on not being able to do a workaround. How are we able to get away with it this time?
Simply because, like I mentioned, we seriously have to disengage from this project. That means no oversight from the city on it. And this group has to go out and get the bids and do make sure that the work is being done that's required. Um, and that is why we would have to enter into a separate agreement uh, with the Pickleball Club to get all those assurances in place.
Okay, and you say we have to completely disengage, but I keep hearing staff time being involved in this process. I'm seeing a lot of staff time. Are we being reimbursed for that, or is it something that we just want to absorb? It could be pretty heavy.
That's correct, and I'm going to take the lead on this one because Public Works does not have the ability to do that. But again, if these are the options, either the city can wait until January twenty twenty two where we're more positioned to do this correctly as a city project. Here's the option if you want it to happen quicker.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, when you look at the courts, are they only doing one side because that's all that needs it? Or do we really need it? My understanding is that we needed to do the entire concrete pad, that it wasn't just one side. Why is it that they're just addressing the one side?
I believe that it's a complete renovation project.
Okay. They only want to place one tennis court, and currently there's two. So it's showing that we're just doing one tennis court?
That's what they want to do. Our bid came up that we wanted to have six pickleball courts and two tennis courts. They want to just do one tennis court, and their bid had eight pickleball courts in that as well.
Okay, and for Okay. And for full transparency, folks, I am a part of the pickleball club. I was probably one of the first ones, though I've only played, I think, three times. I don't have the time to play. It's a great group of people. I've been a huge advocate for this from day one. But I just want to make sure if we go into this that we're going in with our eyes wide open and that we're not going to get sucked in and pulled down a rabbit's hole.
So Mayor and Council, we also have Susanna Yost and Donna Weir on tonight. If you would like to have them answer any questions, then Tammy can pull them in to become panelists.
You guys want to ask some questions of the pickleball folks? No?
Bill Preble, I think, is also available.
Does anybody have any questions for them? I don't see anybody having any questions, so. All right, so any more questions for staff on this one? Counselor Garlington? You're muted.
I just want to make just two small comments. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, two comments. One, I just want to remind you, I mean, okay, so full disclosure, I too am a pickleball member. I have not played since for a long time now, but I think I did pay my money to be a member. They did do an initial renovation on that pickleball court. They did exactly what they said they were going to do in the timeline that they said they were going to do it. So kudos to them. They did do that. And then just a reminder that during the ice storm, it was the pickleball club that came together and got Max Patterson cleaned up in less than one day and removed every bit of all the trees and the limbs and everything else down there. I don't even know how many odes they took down. But I just trust, it's, in my opinion, it is a majorly trustworthy group. I I do trust them. I believe in their word and I think that their their efforts at the park speak volumes. That's all.
Yeah, and the work that they've done has all been on their dime. They've paid for it all. They've done all the hard work. So they're very invested in these courts, absolutely. But again, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be putting a lot of staff hours into something that we just can't. We can't shake those people loose. We can't. We don't have the staff. We don't have the time.
So Mayor, City Council, Bill Preble does have his hand raised and I believe he would be the project manager if this moves forward. So I think it would be good to allow him to provide some information.
Okay, that'd be great. Bring him on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, and hello, Mr. Preble.
Hello?
Hello, Bill.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to address a couple of the questions that somebody asked about our hours. We're nine to noon. But on the rest of the time, yes, we're down there, but the courts are first come, first served then. Anybody can come down there. We've had tennis players come down, not just some kids come down and what we do is we move over, we allow them to play. We really haven't had any conflicts. Other people coming down, the problem is, is that the nets belong to the club. So if one of us are not down there, nobody plays pickleball because unless you bring your own net, you can set it up, you can play. After our hours, no problem. We will move out of your way. We kind of, we get along with everybody. As far as the double nets, the reason we were going to just leave one was because one of the nets is lower because of the slope of the second court that was put in in the 70s. Originally, there was just one court. Taking out those old posts and resetting new ones was a costly item. So we suggested just leaving one tennis court in. The reason we were just building one tennis court in because there's nobody that comes down there and plays tennis. Nobody. And not saying that nobody will if they all get refurbished. But originally, when we came down there, those courts were technically unplayable. There was nobody playing on those pickleball or tennis. There was orange cracks in them. You could stand underneath the tree if you had a tennis racket by the net and actually hit the tree. So nobody was using these courts. I want to see everybody using tennis, pickleball. So I don't think the double net is a killer, but it does add a lot to it. As far as permanent nets, that's probably not a good idea. If you put permanent pickleball nets in, you basically eliminated tennis court. So that's why we use temporary nets so that you can take them down and people can use the facility. We have kids in there that ride their bikes, their kids that skateboard. Probably not supposed to be in there, but we don't say anything. We've had parties in there, so there's other things besides what we do in there that that court is used for. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that we don't have control of the court. We play from nine to noon and after that, it's first come, first served. Whoever wants to use that facility. And that's the way it's always been and that's the way it will continue to be whether we do this project or not. So if anybody has any more questions for me, I would be willing to answer.
Do any counselors have questions? I don't see any hands up. So thank you very much, Mr. Preble. That clarified some things for us.
Okay, thank you.
We're at the point where I would like someone to make a motion, please. Looks like we've got a couple of options, but the staff recommendation is to enter into the agreement to renovate Max Patterson Park project. So I'm not sure if somebody would like to make the motion based on staff recommendation or look at other options.
I do need some guidance, though, on whether the fence should be part of that project. And again, how you feel about one versus two tennis courts, if that's the direction that we're going to go.
All right. So let's just do a consensus then on the fence. How people feel, should the fence be included in the project? Should it be set aside or should they look at options like Counselor Alexander said, where the powder coating of the existing fence would be a less expensive option? Counselor Ripley.
I think whatever, whatever the most economical for them is, I think it just has to be included because if we go and do the courts without replacing the fence, we're going to damage your courts when we go to replace the fence. So I think it all really needs to all be done at the same time. And I think that that should be on them.
Okay, so are you, do you think it should be replaced completely or look at the powder coat option as an allowed alternative?
Well, I think the powder coat option is an option. And even if that's done, they all have to come down. They're going to have to replace anything easy to replace. So when it goes back in, they want to do to it. As long as when they take it down and put it back up, they're repairing anything that needs to be repaired, then it really shouldn't matter on what the options they come up with is.
Counselor Garlington?
I don't have an issue with just one tennis court. I think that's fair. It keeps the cost down and as said before, it didn't look like those courts were being used but very sparingly. The fence. Oh gosh, I wish I had a concrete answer on that one. I'm all about whatever we can do to save money. First of all, I don't want to see that big old fence going to landfill. But if it can be repaired and just put back up, I have absolutely no issue with that at all.
Okay.
So yes, I would like to see it all done at one time, if at all possible. Or I don't have a problem with what is written in our book either that says that if they could do. I mean, I understand it all has to be done at one time, but if they're not pulling up those big concrete pillars, it doesn't seem to me it would absolutely have to be done all at one time. Not that I would completely know the difference, but if it can be done safely the next year, I don't have an issue with that either. That's all.
Counselor Alexander, we're talking about the fence right now. And then I'll come back for the courts.
The powder, the powder coating is a good option. There might even be some other options or avenues that someone else could suggest that they could look into also.
Okay, but the fence does need to be addressed.
I think you need to have a fence.
Counselor Todd?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on the fence. How old is the fence? Do we have any clue?
Oh my gosh.
70s, yeah, it's never been replaced.
Is it ADA compliant for the width to get it?
Probably not, no.
Because, well, so then does that fall on the city then to have to, you know, I mean?
Yeah, anything that's triggered, they'll have to become ADA compliant. That's part of this whole project and their agreement to do it correctly to city standards is that.
You know, I hadn't thought of powder coating as Counselor Alexander had said. I don't know if that's even an option with something that's that old, but we do need to have the fence and I would like it done at the same time. So.
All right, Counselor Hartman?
I would like the fence done at the same time as well.
Okay, are you okay with an alternative instead of replacing it completely, a repair, powder coat, or another option if it's available?
If there's another option available, but personally, if it's that old, I think we need to do it right this time and get it done.
Counselor Tracy?
Yeah, I'm with everybody on including the fence.
Okay. Well, then your consensus there, Jackie, or excuse me, Ms. Betts, is that yes, the fence should be included and that we're open to alternatives to replacing it completely, but we would need to make sure that it was done right. Okay, so then we're going to go around with the courts. One court versus two courts. Counselor Ripley?
Unfortunately, I think I've had to say two courts. My main thought on that is you know, early on, cities have set up a road with pickleballs, the hot thing to do, but in 10, 15 years, it's going to be a different group of people and they might not be wanting to play it. It might go back to tennis. You never know. So I think having the two tennis courts is the it keeps the options open for more people.
Okay, and then we have Counselor Garlington's. One, Counselor Alexander.
Fine with me. If you have two, well, you can actually set up more pickleball. And then like Counselor Ripley said, if they resort back to tennis, you've got the the two tennis courts. But I'm fine with one as long as it's a good job and I trust Bill to do a fine job, so.
Okay, Counselor Todd?
I'm fine with one.
Counselor Hartman?
I think I agree. I would like to keep the two as the option and making note to keep the tennis lines because they are currently painted over right now. So even if you wanted to go down there, there's no lines for the court. So I think having two, just as long as we're being mindful to keep the line showing.
Okay, Counselor Tracy?
Two, it's fine.
Fine. All right, well, that's three to three and I'm the deciding vote and I say one court is fine. So we'll just do the one court. City Administrator Betts. By slim margin.
So I am going to work with the City Attorney's Office to draft an agreement to allow the pickleball club to begin fundraising, accepting donations. Our preference is that the fence be included as the project at a cost efficient with one tennis court. And we will make sure that we have all of the liability concerns addressed in the agreement. That agreement doesn't need to come back to council as long as you're giving me approval to move forward with that. So I think I have what I need.
Well, not quite yet because we still need to make the motion to move forward with it. This was just the two little questions that you had. So I need a motion to move forward with the agreement with the pickleball club. With the fence decision consensus and the court consensus. You're making the motion, Counselor Alexander?
Yes, we go with that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Garlington to authorize the city administrator to enter into a written agreement with the Gladstone Pickleball Club to complete the renovation of the Max Patterson Park project with the inclusion of the fence being replaced or repaired and the finishing of the one court versus the two. Do we have any other questions or concerns? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Pickleball renovation has been approved. Next is item number 12, appointment to the Audit and Budget Committees. We received one application for both committees from Mr. Steve Johnson. We've already had a meeting, so we kind of already started the process. So I'm not sure why we're taking more applications, but staff?
So the reason why we're still taking applications is because we have vacancies on our Audit, Traffic Safety, and Budget Committee. We did receive one application from Steve Johnson that would like to be on the Audit Committee and the Budget Committee. So we will have the city recorder do a roll call vote for, we can start with the Budget Committee first and then move on to the Audit Committee second.
All right, Tammy?
Counselor Hartman?
No.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
No.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
No. All right, go to the next one, please.
Audit Committee? Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
No.
Counselor Ripley? Counselor Alexander?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Nope.
Counselor Hartman?
No.
Mayor Stimple?
No. Thank you. All right, do we have any business carried forward?
Just that I am going to have to learn how to play pickleball. So that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, so next is business from the audience. And as I've said before, and I stated every meeting, that you have three minutes and Benny Bannock will be keeping time. We have three speakers that signed up for tonight. Tammy, could you call them forward, please? I'm assuming Troy Love's the first speaker. Can we bring him up, please?
Hi there. Thank you for your time tonight. I've been a homeowner in Gladstone for about eight years. I live on Arlington Street. I'm an active member of the Gladstone Education Foundation and I participated in SOLF and cleaning up the river a few times. Just so you can kind of get a feel, I am an active member of Gladstone, although I haven't been to a city council meeting. This is my first one. I live on 545 East Arlington. Across the street from me is a house that is 540 East Arlington. And behind me is the house that's 540 First Avenue. These have been owned by the same investor for the last four years for East Arlington and six years for These have been owned by the same investor for the last four years for East Arlington and six years for five forty First Avenue. Um, nothing has been done with these homes except develop the properties. They've been divided into multiple properties and then sold off and to, and made new homes with. And the problem is, is that we've had issues with vagrants in the past. I've had issues with rats, which I believe is due to these homes. Um, and I request that everyone on city council drive by these homes and would like to see what you guys would feel like living sandwiched in between these two homes while also being the highest taxpayer on Arlington Street in a single family home. Uh, that, that's me. Um, I've talked to multiple neighbors about it. Nobody is happy with these homes. Um, I've talked, I've reached out to code enforcement a couple of times and have basically been shunned away saying that these homes are safe and that they're acceptable, which I don't believe to be the case. I don't think that any other community in Clackamas County would allow homes like this to be, to sit vacant for four to six years while the gutters are falling off, stuff is falling off the house, the structures are not sat, not safe. Windows are broken. Um, I'm just wondering what criteria does the city have for condemning these homes? And I would, yeah, I just, I would like to know what, what can be done.
All right, thank you very much. Um, staff, you've submitted a letter to staff, so I'm sure they're going to be looking into it. Um, so we'll, we'll have staff get back to you.
When should I expect a follow-up?
Uh, Jackie.
I would say within seven days is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and please come to some more meetings.
Okay, I will do that.
All right. All right, next.
Do I just start?
Yes, please. Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Scotty Shaner. I, Melissa Freels and other volunteers recently took part in a local effort to help, uh, post some learning apart, standing together signs throughout the Gladstone community. The signs which say we support our schools and we love our school staff are meant to be a show of support for our local schools. With hybrid learning and new distance learning routines beginning soon, the timing seemed critical. After what has been a challenging year, the students, staff, teachers and parents need a morale boost more than ever. These signs are a first step. As Gladstone parents who work full-time and part-time in our community, we are not able to volunteer in the community as much as we some time for this community effort. In what has been a very divisive time, this was an opportunity to foster unity throughout Gladstone. We were disappointed, to say the least, when we heard that the city had denied us mission to post signs at places like the civic center, police department, library, et cetera. We were taken aback that the city was unwilling to take part in such a simple gesture of goodwill. If there is anyone above all else who should be supporting community efforts like this, it is the city and its officials. We weren't advertising anything or politicizing anything. Their purpose is to show support for the one thing that pulls our community together, our schools. Then we were disappointed more when we found that someone took issue with the signs placed prior to our request to place them on city properties being denied. We had personally asked each and every business and community member permission to place the signs on their property before placing them. We were so very thankful for those who stepped up to share this message of support and allow us to post our signs when the city wouldn't. This is the kind of camaraderie that creates a great communities like Gladstone. The fact that the city would not embrace this effort is very surprising and disheartening and it's a message heard by many of us, loud and clear. We ask that you reconsider your stance on this and other future endeavors created to show support for Gladstone schools and the staff and students that add energy to their hallways. Thank you for your time. Volunteers like Melissa Freels and myself appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Tammy, is this, is Luke Atcox not going to be speaking?
Correct. Uh, I'm sorry, did you not hear? He had, um, sorry, he was the first one, but he had sent an email indicating he was not going to be able to, uh, speak tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next is business from the council, so I'll start with councillor Tracy.
Uh, I don't have anything at the moment, mayor.
Okay, councillor Alexander.
Okay, just that, uh, I meet before each council meeting with, um, Chief Schmerber and Chief Huffman. And, uh, they've just been doing a great job, um, community engagement and, and people have told me that they've talked to Chief Schmerber and Chief Huffman and they've learned a lot, so they're both doing a great job. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Councillor Todd.
I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Right, councillor Hartman.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanted to update you all. Um, I attended some advocacy things this past month. And, uh, the state of Oregon did receive seventeen point five million dollars from PG&E and they'll be having the information on their website. Um, it's in thirteen different languages, which is fantastic. Um, they're doing a dollar for dollar match of up to a thousand dollars. And they understand that all of us are in different areas. We all need help right now, so there are several operator, operations, options for people. Um, so hopefully you guys can check it out and we can save some money there, um, personally. Um, I had the small business discussion throughout the month, which was great. Uh, I definitely need to work on my Facebook Live skills because it didn't go so well, but, um, uh, there are some suggestions that I'm happy to email out to the, to Administrator Betts, but I think it's great to just listen. I mean, even if we aren't able to do them, but the main takeaway was really centered around parklets and how we can make that affordable. And I know I wasn't around, um, probably when you had the discussion last year, but hope, maybe we can, um, add it to a later agenda to discuss on how we can do that as we kind of bounce between moderate and high risk, um, especially on Portland Avenue. Um, and then just receiving information where to direct our small businesses um, uh, in regards to the American Rescue Plan. I know we're also going to talk about that at a later time, but that was also something um, that people were asking about, excuse me. Um, tomorrow I will be attending a work group for Transforming Justice in Oregon with the Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion Office. So super stoked to join that group and see what kind of changes that they're gonna make. Um, the last thing I have is really just trying to engage, uh, a discussion and dialogue about the school sign issue. As a parent that has gone through this very, very difficult year, um, it, it really is disheartening and um, I take great offense to the fact that there are a few that don't agree with showing support to our schools. Um, our school district has continually fed our community, uh, for this past year. They continually are supportive during our emergencies and they have had to survive just like the rest of us throughout this year. And I'm not saying that they have done everything correctly. I, no school district has, we're all making it up as we go, but the one thing that we can do as a city is to show how much we support them. And it was extremely, uh, disheartening to hear that there are some of you that don't agree with that. And I wanna, I wanna understand more and I wanna understand why you felt it was political and I hope that we can have this dialogue right now and not dismiss it. Um, because the amount of phone calls that I fielded over the past week of disappointment that the city is not supporting the schools puts me in a position where I don't want to speak for you all. Um, I, this councillor supports our schools and our school staff and is so appreciative of the teachers within our school districts. Um, but I, I, I need to understand why some of you felt like it wasn't appropriate to support, to put signs that say support our schools.
Councillor Ripley.
You don't need to be dismissive. I, I wasn't.
He just has a question about his, yes.
Uh, to say that other councillors don't support the, the schools, I think is a really poor choice of words because if this would have been brought to city council, I think you would have got all council support on it, that when it's a surprise, all of a sudden signs are going up, people don't know what's going on. If people come and ask me as a councillor, what's the sign about? And I say, I'm a city councillor, I don't have a clue. Well, that's, if you want to do something, when you do it the proper way, the right channels and follow all the rules and guidelines so that everybody knows what's going on, you put them in and all these signs just start showing up. Yeah, I, I had a few people ask me about it and I didn't have a clue, so I didn't comment on anything. Um, but I think that's a bigger issue is the lack of communication on council with this. If we would have known, I'm pretty sure every councillor would have supported the schools on this.
Anybody else?
That's my thought.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I'm confused because the email that we all received, that was the first time I've ever heard about these signs. So I just confused why we're saying we didn't know anything about it when someone did ask us permission about it.
Councillor Garlandton.
I think the permission was asked after the signs had gone up. Am I wrong on that one?
Yeah, no, they, they were definitely going up.
And they, they were, the, all of the private properties or, and or businesses that were asked, they didn't take them down, correct? Am, am I wrong about, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this.
I don't think so. I think the only ones that were removed were the ones in the right of way.
And that was, okay, well, I guess my only issue with that is that nobody else is allowed to have signs in the right of way, so I I support our schools a hundred percent. I also am, and yeah, I don't, I, I'm I, um, I have to abide by the fact that nobody can have a sign in the right of way. And unless we're gonna change that for just school signs, I guess that, that would be it right there.
Councillor Alexander.
Yeah, that's the same, same issue I had. They, they were just going up. I come down the street one morning, they're just sticking them in, in the right of ways. And I mean, you can come to my house right now and see four of them from my front yard. People supported it, took the signs, put them in their yard. It was more of a code enforcement thing that you just can't stick them anywhere in the right of way. You know, yet there, there has to be some rules and that was it. And so that's, that was the issue I had. And then also, I don't know, it's a whole nother issue for those, if you support or you don't. Some people, I've talked to many people about this and they are saying hashtag learning apart, standing together. But they don't want the kids to go back to school. They were misunderstood, the signs. So there was no explanation explaining it and that's, I've got right here like fifteen names of people that didn't understand that. So it was, you know, there were, like councillor Ripley said, if there would have been a little more, uh, informative, uh, it would have been a little more informative before it went out and just started happening and people understand what the signs meant and what they were for and they were placed in the right place. Wouldn't have been that big of a deal.
Well, and my concern was the right of way issue. We have codes and ordinances. We try and get our one code enforcement officer to out there and enforce these every chance he gets. Um, political season gets a little crazy when you've got two thousand signs all over the city and one person that is out there trying to enforce them, but other times of year it's a little bit easier for him to do so. Um, we don't allow signs in the right of way. It's that simple. If they're in the right of way, complain about it and Sean will come and take care of it. It's pretty much complaint driven and I don't feel that we should start excluding somebody, some people from our codes and ordinances. That gets very dangerous. And I'm offended by somebody telling us that we don't support schools. When I became mayor, we started having meetings with the school board and Bob Stewart every three months quarterly, looking for things that we could do collectively to support our schools. And that's why we have so heavily jumped into the affordable housing issue because that is a huge problem for our school district. That's why I jumped in heavily into the food pantry because of the, in, the food insecurity in our schools. We do support the schools where it's appropriate for us to do so, but putting signs in the right of way, that's, that's not a support school thing. I'm happy to put one in my yard, but we just can't start giving people permission that we don't give of everybody. That gets really dangerous. Anything else?
I have a question.
Councillor Todd, yes.
But, but the email that we got with the request was about specific civic buildings, which is a totally different issue than where people randomly place signs because you can drive around town and see many different types of signs that are not political, that are in the right of way. I don't know if we all get on the phone and call code enforcement for that. Um, I think there are two different questions here. Um, I think councillor Hartman's more talking about the city not allowing them on civic buildings as opposed to being four blocks from councillor Alexander's house and being able to see them. I don't know if that's as problematic as, as it's being made out to be.
Well, then if you allow that, just like I've said with resolutions and proclamations, once you allow it once, the floodgate opens and you cannot say no to anybody else.
Um, I actually, I agree with you not having them on the, the civic property. I actually do, because I do think we go down a really, a rabbit hole. I don't know if we needed to call code enforcement standing up and down the street of Portland Avenue though, when they're in front of a coffee shop that isn't your coffee shop. That's what I'm saying. Is let's, let's not politicize this. It's really, let's, maybe we make signs and they'd have big orange and black hearts and we love our schools. Would there be people calling and, and, you know, I mean, I looked up what the hashtag is. It's a Facebook thing. It's like, it's not an organization. It's not anything. There's like, I, I think under a hundred people on this, uh, Facebook page. I just, let, let's try and.
I, I don't think we can control people calling Sean over signs.
Okay.
We can't. If people are gonna do it, they're gonna do it. We, we have no control over that.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, please?
Yes.
So I, I appreciate your wanting to use equity and code enforcement, but we're letting a lot of things slide. We just had a citizen come to us and speak to us about two houses that we have not enforced on to the best of my knowledge, except for a couple of visits. And those are truly impacting that neighborhood, whereas a sign supporting our schools, whether in the right of way or not. Uh, going back to councillor Todd's point, you can drive all over this town and find signs in the right of way. I'm doubting that a lot of activity is being generated for code enforcement officer boils on signs in the right of way, real estate signs, things of that nature. I mean, um, I, I just want us to kind of like be truthful here, what we're talking about, what we're talking about. I personally think there was something about the sign that impacted people and made them feel a certain way and that became visceral to them and our reaction becomes visceral. I mean, I just, I couldn't even understand it from the beginning of the email chain. I just couldn't understand what the issue was until I visited the Facebook site and still didn't see an issue myself, but I could see where others might. And I'm not casting aspersions. I'm just, I want us to be honest about what we like and don't like, what we're gonna do for support. Councillor Todd says, yeah, orange and black hearts on a sign, we're all gonna buy into that. Are we necessarily? Maybe some will, some won't. But to say we want to start enforcing our codes and be equitable about our code enforcement, we already, we had a citizen write us a letter this week about selective code enforcement on his particular car that was parked in front of his house. We just had a citizen testify to us about selective code enforcement with, in regards to two houses that are zombie houses. Let's be honest about our code enforcement when we're telling our citizens we're gonna try to enforce all of our codes.
It is a code enforcement issue, absolutely. Councillor Garlandton.
I honestly, if I was driving down the street and I saw the signs on the side of the road in any easement, any right of way, anything, I would have looked at the signs and I would have thought, oh, those, those are nice and I would have kept on driving. Bottom line is somebody asked us about it. And at that point, then you give your opinion, right? So that's what I did. And I said, wow, those are, that would be in the right of way. I don't think that's correct. So I guess that's kind of that ask permission or ask for forgiveness question out there. That's where I'm coming at it from. It has nothing to do with anything else that, in that I was asked for my opinion and that's the opinion I gave. That's all.
All right. Did you have anything else councillor Hartman?
I, yeah, thank you. I just want to say, you know, thank you for having the dialogue. Um, I, you know, just want to under, wanted to understand because of the of the fifty plus phone calls that I receive as a parent representative, you know, I don't speak for all parents in this district, that's for sure. You know, but I do get called and I just wanted the opportunity for you all to be able to speak as to why the city as an entity wasn't allowing that. And I didn't want to speak for everybody, um, because also was confused as to why. So I appreciate you all, um, having that discussion and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garlington.
Um, so I attended Budget 101. That was enlightening and exciting. And we learned a lot of not very new things, but we have a lot of new faces, uh, volunteering for the city. So that is really good. Um, the senior center, we did not have a meeting this last month, but we have some, uh, we've had a lot of discussion, um, going forward about what's going on in there and, um, the people that are in there, how they're handling everything that's changing. And I'm paying attention to that, but we haven't had another senior center meeting again. Uh, the library meeting, apparently my emails got mixed up and I didn't get invited to that one, but I'm working on that. And then I was on a, uh, and this just interesting little tidbit, uh, listening to a League of Oregon Cities meeting and they were talking about uh, taking a bill to the state about changing all of the flushing in the city for all of the the baby wipes and all of those kind of wipes that say this is flushable, this is flushable, this is flushable. Well, hang on, because all of that's going to be labeled not flushable. And I think that the city of Gladstone is another area that would like to see everybody in Gladstone not flush anything that's not toilet paper. That was a fun discussion. Okay, so have a great April.
Counsel Ripley. You're still muted. You're muted.
Better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I got one thing to talk about. I have some notes off to the side, so I keep myself on track here. Um, but at the last city work session, I kind of lost control of my emotions and my, I lost control. Well, let's just put it that way. Um, and I want to explain that and apologize to the counselors and the community. I'll do that at the end here. Um, but to set a stage, it's not an excuse or anything, but just to show why I got pushed to that point where I exploded. Um, so I started with the fire department in nineteen ninety and I was there for twenty-eight years. And seeing some of the changes that came in the fire station were horrible. It was horrible for the attitudes for the community. There's a lot of bad stuff there. And, um, so I quit the fire station. I ran for city council thinking I could maybe make a, make a difference, have some for impact on keeping some of this great stuff that the fire department had. And yet after two years and three months on council, this city council of Gladstone has not had one conversation about the fire department. They haven't had a conversation. The volunteers left. They haven't talked about how we're gonna fund this paid department that we don't have the money to fund. You know, in losing, you know, if it was time to lose a volunteer apartment, that's one thing. But it was all done secretly. Everything, everything is all manipulation, deceit and lies on stuff. And backdoor stuff that pushed the volunteers out and left this paid department. And if it was that time to go, it's time to go. But I think that really should have been a vote to the community, not a few people making these decisions. Um, so the other thing that kind of bothered me, kind of pushed me to that edge is because after two years and three months, I've had one or two conversations with Counselor Tracy, but I've never had a counselor ask me why I say it's a big loss to lose the fire station. And to me, that's a really apathetic attitude for the rest of the counselors. But the more I think about it, maybe it's not an apathetic attitude. Maybe it's because the other counselors don't realize what we had when we had a whole volunteered fire department. And we had, you know, thirty to forty seven members that were always responding and it was, everything was ran by the community. But nobody seems to care, want to have the conversation. And yet we have a budget coming up that we have to vote yes on. We can't shut the city down. Yet we haven't talked about how we're gonna fund this and why we did it. And there's been, never been a conversation of it. But we're all gonna go ahead and vote yes on the budget. That sounds like a great idea for a bunch of city counselors to vote yes on something you've never talked about. So at that meeting, because of some conflict of interest, I knew that the conversation wasn't going to happen. And that, that was the first poking of the bear. Um, but for me to lose control of my emotions, I will not apologize for. For the language I used, I sincerely apologize to all the counselors and the community, because I should be able to keep myself in check. And that's not my character. That's not my personality. But after a while of seeing the losses and continuing losses and the city, there's just more and more changes to the city that somebody lived here ten years ago, moved back, they're not gonna recognize Gladstone. But we keep avoiding these conversations. And, but even with all that said, that's no excuse for, for me to use any foul language. And at a city council meeting, I would have never done it. It was a work session and I thought we were gonna hash stuff out, so I fired up anyway. So I truly do apologize for that. Um, but I don't apologize. I apologize for my language, but I don't apologize for coming to the end of my rope. I really hope the community really doesn't know how much lack of conversation there has been. Because as representatives of the community, we should be having these conversations that we feel to have. So I'm gonna end there. I did make another comment about the fire station that I'll address next month, but I won't use the fire department. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give an example of why I said use the word train wreck. And, but I'm gonna use a math example for that, but I'll wait till next month so you guys don't have to keep listening to me. Yeah. So that's all I got. I do apologize and I really hope it won't happen again. But there's no guarantees. I'll try.
Thank you. All right, did I, did I think I got everybody? Did I miss anybody? Nope. All right. My turn. Sorry about this. Um, food pantry is now located permanent, well, permanently. We are a fixed asset to the back of Hillside Christian Fellowship on Glen Echo in the back portables. Um, we continue to serve the GCCF and COVID quarantine families. And we were able to partner with the school districts, um, food, the lunch and breakfast and lunch, I think, delivery program out of Cracks Burger last week. And we were able to offer bags of groceries to all the families. Um, I've received a note today that we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow to mix it up again. It's constantly changing because of restrictions. I think we may start doing a, um, kind of a shopping experience. I'm not sure yet, but I'll let you guys know. Last night was the Parks Board meeting. We talked about the Meldrum Bar fee station. Because of a shortage, shortage of materials, the delivery of the unit has been delayed. They're hoping to get it in May and they're gonna do some of the site prep work prior to that being delivered. The pickleball court renovation was discussed and we've already done that. Um, user fees for Meldrum Bar Park was discussed. Staff suggested to waive fees this year and come up with a flat fee for next year. They're gonna take that information to the Parks Board in July and then to city council in August. Um, one board member asked if we should charge the RC car folks for use, which is kind of timely since we came up with the pickleball people as well. Um, they also started talking about the airplane, the remote control airplane folks that are down there that use it, um, whether we should be charging them because they have a pretty dedicated area. Um, and then also how are we gonna deal with potential traffic backups when the fee station goes in? Uh, board is asking for park funds update each month. A Meldrum pop bar site plan is a priority and I know that we've all discussed it. Um, staff knows it's a priority and the Parks Board would like an update on when we can expect that to happen. Um, uh, Darren is making sure the Parks Board members have all of the links to the, all of the documents because it's, I believe, five new members, so they don't really know the history of a lot of these topics. Um, Clackamas County Corning Committee also called C4 had an update on the supportive housing services program, which is the Affordable Housing Bond Money. The administrative pieces should be ironed out in July and the funds should start being, um, sent out soon after. I stressed how important it is that we actually get these dollars working for us instead of spending a year and a half just figuring out policy and admin. We need to actually get these projects built. Um, there's three bills being looked at right now that'll ease the process, so, um, keep an eye on these. We can use your support, House Bill three two six one, House Bill two zero zero six, and Senate Bill eighty-eight. We had an update from Karen Bierig on the regional and countywide transit development plan, looking at where the gaps are in transit. And it looks like all of Clackamas County is pretty much one big gap right now. Um, executive committee meeting last night, we were talking about the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the ARPA. The state's getting seven hundred and eighty million dollars. The county is getting eighty-one million dollars. And the city's going to get funds. I'm not sure what that's going to be, but I'm sure we'll find out shortly. The money is supposed to be allocated by May twelfth. Um, but the county feels that we're probably gonna get half of those funds this year and half of the funds next year. We have not received guidance or criteria tied to these funds yet. They're hoping that we get them before we get the money. Um, so crossing our fingers for that. They realize that they need to get the money out there working for the community. So their commitment is to get the admin and policy piece done by the end of June. Um, I am being considered as the county's representative for the Region One Area Commission on Transportation, which is where there's gonna be a lot of I-205 tolling conversations. So I, I feel strongly that we will be impacted negatively, negatively by all the diversion. So we need to have a voice on that commission. So if you have anything you'd like to take, if I do get appointed, I'm, well, I'm, I would love all of your comments. Um, Clackamas County is back in higher risk, heavier restrictions. Um, we still need to do all of the mask wearing, hand washing, social distancing and quarantine if you have symptoms. I can't wait till the day when I don't have to say that anymore. Our numbers keep going up. As of April seventh, we have four hundred and fourteen cases of COVID confirmed. That's up fifty from our last council meeting on March ninth and up sixteen from just last week. Um, and I know even though some people are vaccinated, the vaccine process is a nightmare for everybody. Uh, I, I feel your pain and I hope that there's a solution to that soon. I'm not hearing of anything. I'm hearing worst case scenarios. So all I can say is just keep trying and I will do everything we can to help. Um, and as I continue to stress every month during my mayor's videos, please go to credible sources for your information. There's a lot of bad information out there, especially related to COVID. So please go to credible sources. Um, that's all that I have. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn, please?
I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Have a second? Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Hartman to adjourn. Do we have any discussion? I don't see any hands. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
For Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, meeting is adjourned at eight fourteen PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.